Motion in the second to accept the minutes of the April twentieth, twenty twenty one Board of Education meeting. I need a motion.
Motion.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Okay, public hearing. I need a motion in a second to suspend the business meeting.
Second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Um, I need a motion in a second to convene the public hearing of the annual meeting.
Second.
All in favor, aye. Bridgette, if you would, please present briefly the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two budget.
So, good evening. Thank you for being here with us for tonight's budget hearing. The budget process for school districts really begins in about November. All buildings and departments receive a budget building spreadsheet from the business office and they begin to determine their needs. And they align their educational plans to the district's mission statement. In December, the budget meetings begin with the buildings and departments. We analyze spending and their submitted budget spreadsheets. In January, many factors that affect the tax levy limit begin to be announced by different entities since the school district is only responsible for setting the levy. So everything else is set by the Office of the State Comptroller, the Office of Real Property Tax Services, the Town of Islip and Suffolk County. In January, school districts also receive the first look at state aid via the state's educate, uh, executive budget. From there, since January, you've seen bi-weekly or monthly presentations to the board and to the public with updates regarding revenues and impacts of tax levy limit. By April one of every year, the governor and the state budget are due. And we learned this year that Connect Quatt will receive an increase in state aid based on our state aid projection with the governor's, gubernator, that's good, governor's final legislative budget. This increase, as well as a combination of increasing fund balance and reserves, allowed us to lower the tax levy limit, or tax levy in general, by about one million from two point nine percent down to one point nine nine percent. This is significant because, oh, I'm so sorry, Jesse. Because the majority of surrounding school districts had to go to their tax levy limit. So, the revenue budget for twenty one, twenty two is two oh three million, five eighty one, seven oh seven. I'll just give you a second with the slide. And we will move on, okay. The next slide is the annual tax impact. An approved budget costs fifteen dollars and sixty cents more per month than the current year's budget. The next slide is the expenditure slide that you've seen at a couple of different presentations. So, the twenty one, twenty two budget maintains all current instructional and co-curricular programs. It provides professional development, continues technology initiatives, includes, uh, PPE for students and staff, health and safety upgrades, lowers elementary class sizes, and returns nineteen teachers to original duties, including six reading teachers, three RTI, four computer science, and six math specialists. The next slide is a breakout of the expenditure budget, which school districts have to create a balanced budget, so the revenues must match the expenditures. The expenditure budget is two oh three, five eighty one, seven oh seven. General support is eleven percent of the budget, instruction is fifty three percent, transportation five percent, and undistributed expenses is thirty one percent. The budget to budget increase is two percent over twenty twenty one. The next and final slide is a reminder to vote between the hours of eight AM to nine PM at Connect Quatt High School, Oakdale Bohemia Middle School, and Rockcock Middle School, depending on where you live. Thank you.
Thank you, Bridgette. I just have, um, a couple of things to say before we move on. Uh, the tax levy cap is what?
What, the cap was two point nine percent, but we are going with a tax levy of one point nine nine percent.
Our tax levy is one point nine nine, but what's the actual increase then to the taxpayers? That number is different than the tax levy cap? That's the, the increase from last year to this year?
Sure. So, we went from one twenty nine, six six five, four eighty one to one thirty two, two forty five, eight twenty four. That is a two point five million dollar increase.
No, the percentage, so the tax levy cap is
Two point nine percent.
Right. We are doing one point nine nine.
Correct.
But the actual increase in your taxes is a different number. What was that increase? You said it last
The budget to budget, is that what you're asking?
The last meeting, yes. You said it the last meeting.
Two percent.
No, it was more than that. It was two point something, I believe. No. No, the, there's, Linda, I ask this every year. There's, the tax levy cap is two po, is the two percent. We're at one point nine nine, but the actual increase to the taxpayer before the exclusions. Because we have exclusions that brings us down, that makes our number be one point nine. We start at this number, you have New York State that allows us to exclude all these things, and then we get the one point nine. So what is that original number?
Are you talking about the CPI way back when? If that gets put into the, gets put into the actual formula?
When we do our, well, no, come on. When we do the numbers, and it's been presented a million times. If I had the, the slides, I would show you. You start at this number, and then New York State says you can exclude this, exclude this, and exclude this, and then we come up with a one point nine.
No, that's actually the tax levy cap calculation, and the one that we got to this year for all the exclusions and the CPI and all that number crunching is two point nine, but we are going out with a one point nine nine.
Right, we ha, because we have the exclusions.
No, the exclusions are part of the original calculation of the tax levy limit. So, you, you're talking about the calculation
Where's the report card? Is it on the report card? Did we get the report card yet? Is, you, you have
So you're talking about
You have to present it on the report card, so.
You're talking about the number before the, uh, the available carryover and the tax levy limit before exclusions without the capital levy share. So that number was one thirty, three thirty four, five oh five.
The percentage, why do I have a Spanish one and I can't read it? Oh. Oh, it's on one, so, okay, I get it. But this whole page is Spanish. This, is this the? No, this, this whole page is Spanish.
The, the first page is English, the translation for Spanish is the second page, and then the first page of the numbers is English and the second is Spanish.
Okay, so that's where I, so it's not, this is not the report card?
No, that's the budget notebook.
It's on the report card. I'll look on the report card and bring it up. Okay, and then I just, the last question I have is, um, the, um, I lost my train of thought because I looked that up. All right, forget it, doesn't matter. We're good. Eh, oh, no, my last question was what Ed brought up last time. Uh, what is, what is the rule, and maybe Lucy, you might have to ask, why do, why does the board vote first? And then we get public comment. Shouldn't it be the other way around? What, what is the law on that? Why do we do that? Yeah, why do we vote yes or no? And then the public gets to talk. It's already done.
Um, that's the way the law is written. I'm not sure what the rationale behind it is, but you can hear a comment from the public with regard to what you adopt.
I mean, we do anyway. We ask our public to speak
Yeah.
during, anyway, but I, I just wanted to know what that rationale was. Okay.
I don't know what the rationale is, honestly, but I can, I can kind of
I mean, it, it's kind of
I can certainly look at the legislative comments, but remember, these, these are laws that were created back in the eighteen hundreds.
It didn't make any sense. Okay, so it's not something we do, it's the law.
Correct.
All right, okay. Um, thank you, Bridgette. The, um, there is public comment now on this public hearing only, on the budget only. This section, um, gives us an opportunity to recognize people we should raise
Are we, are we done asking the board comments on this piece?
Oh, did you want, you, no, I was the only one that said they had a comment. Did you want to talk? We don't really comment on this.
No, I just, I, I'm just gonna make a comment to re- reiterate what we had said at the last meeting.
I know, remember the question I was gonna ask. Okay.
So, it's, so Bridgette, it's two point five million increase in his budget, but we spent six million dollars of this is COVID, so a por, a portion of this increase is due to the expenditures from COVID.
Mylen, you have to speak into your microphone, please.
So when we prepare our next budget, can we anticipate six million dollars less on our next budget to bring us under two hundred million?
So, the, the budget to budget increase on the expenditure side is a four point one million dollar increase. On the revenue side, it's a, um, for the, just for taxes, that's a two point five million dollar increase.
Right. So, six million dollars was added to this budget to cover the COVID cost.
It wasn't added, it was there, it was taken out of contingencies, correct?
It was included, it was inclu, it was included in expenditures.
It's an extra expense.
So
Right, but we had it built into contingencies.
We look at next year's budget, can we anticipate this budget being under two hundred million? Because we know six million of this is for COVID expense, so in conjunction with our enrollment going down, minus six million dollars, we could potentially be looking at the, the budget going the opposite way instead of going up.
No, we've, we've pretty much kept every single person that we took on for COVID-related teaching and whatever else.
Yeah, but exact, but the year after, there's gonna be a lot of elimination. You're gonna eliminate the COVID expense, hopefully, because by that time, people will be vaccinated. You're gonna eliminate expenses because your enrollment is going down. I spoke about this at the last meeting, that our, um, projections are, are going down significantly. I think, uh, at the time when you had provided the board the, the data, Linda, I think, uh, I remember seeing the high school at fifteen hundred, even less. And I think that was about three years ago, so we're almost nearing the end of that, uh, projection cycle. I think it was five years, over five years, I believe
Mm-hmm.
that you provided us. So we're looking in the next year or two at the tail end of that projection number. So now, I don't know if now is the time or next year is the time to do another projection.
So that's possible, uh, to look at the projection and, and then also look at the different programs that the next board may be interested in. Um, because a, as you said, we added about four million dollars of expenses, but we took that four million dollars and increased our budget
Right.
by taking that, so the, so last year's budget, which was one hundred and ninety nine million, we added that four million additional, so it was really two hundred and three million. So we're almost similar to what we, what, what our budgets are for the two years.
Right.
And we, we were going over last time, the increases to salary and benefits and all that kind of eating up the differential, so I'm not sure we'll go backwards, um, in, in budgeting. But if there's, uh, if there's an enrollment decrease and the board decides to keep the programs where they are and not add more programs, it could be very similar to this year's budget. So I would, I don't, I don't, but I don't want to confuse the public thinking that we're looking at next year's budget at this point. You know, the twenty two, twenty three budget, right now
Speak into the microphone, Mylen, please.
The reason why I brought it up is that, uh, should we start looking now at projections?
So the board would like for, for me to look, um, usually it comes out of HR, that goes over to, uh, they, they talk with BOCs about doing a, another projection, looking at live births and what it might look like in five years. We can certainly discuss that.
Okay, is that something the board votes on?
Yeah, I wouldn't do it tonight, but I would, we can certainly get you the cost and what it might look like, um, in, for the next board meeting, if you're interested, we can, we can do that research.
Because if I remember, it was about three to five thousand dollars for that research.
Yeah, it was pretty hefty, yeah.
All right, thank you.
Um, Mylen, just reminded me the question that I wanted to ask. The, um, legal limit of contingencies is four percent. Where do you think that will be this year and, and with the next, with the new budget? Are we gonna finally be at the legal limit? Because I know we're a little bit above last year. I mean, we started at fifteen percent when I was on here, and we finally knocked it down. So, are, are we gonna be at the legal limit soon?
The goal is to be at the legal limit.
Okay, but that's not answering my question.
There's a lot of work to be done.
Or next year?
There's a lot of work to be done between now and when the books close in October.
With the new budget, do you, do you, did you plan on being at the legal limit?
Yes, we plan on being with the new budget.
So we kind, we should be there this year, especially with all the money that we spent in the contingencies. We should be there.
As I said, it's a lot of work to be done between now and October.
Okay, I'll wait till October. All right. Um, at this time now, we have public comment only about the budget. Um, if there are any other questions, do we have another public comment after that? We don't. Tonight is just the public hearing. So, um, the, the, uh, comments will relate to the budget. Um, does anyone want to speak about the budget?
Good evening. Uh, from what I heard this evening, you're saying a house assessed at fifty thousand, something like about fifteen dollars and fifty cents a month? Is there increase?
Yes.
Well, not really, but, uh, the town of Islip, uh, hasn't really determined the levy yet. Um, the average household in my area is paying about thirteen thousand dollars a year. A person has to pay about a quarter of their yearly earnings to cover that. This has been a very difficult two years for a lot of people, physically and financially. I also brought up that this meeting takes place at the wrong time. Four of the members of the board already voted to approve the budget. One did not. So the budget is approved. Okay. The answer I got, we always did it that way. That doesn't mean it was right. I was in business and a lot of people said to me, we always did it that way. But I found a cheaper way and better way to do it. We do a lot of things that we're not looking at the pennies, and the pennies do add up. An increase is an increase. We still do our payroll in-house. I don't know why, when there's ADP out there. And I'm sure they can do it cheaper. We send a truck to the post office every day. That's at least a forty thousand dollar truck with another eighty thousand dollar employee when the United States Post Office delivers to my house six days a week. I'd like to know what that's all about. Never in the last couple of years have we looked at a different way of the medical course. Medical is a big bill. There's a lot of ways to do it. I gave my employees free medical, but I made them pay a hundred percent for their wives. The wives here, we pay them money if they're not in the plan, and many of them are working for another company and getting medical coverage there. We have a lunch program that historically doesn't make money, doesn't even break even. There's nothing wrong with breaking even. You can't put out what you can't sell. And the kids are not buying what you're sa, are putting out to them. We're very heavy in administration. Over the last couple of years, I have seen the administration in this district rise. My accountant said to me years ago, he didn't know how I manage the company with so few people. Because I looked outside the box. I had a computer when no one had a computer. It had a blue screen with white letters. And I had to get it from Texas. I, when it broke down, they UPS'd me another board. Over at the library in the big meeting room that's right next door, one of the custodians with their technical expert replaced all the lights with, I guess, some kind of combination LED that not only does it give more light, but it saves money at the electric bill. Just because we did something a certain way doesn't mean we have to keep on doing it. And I hate to beat a thorn in your side, but I'm gonna try now that COVID is basically over to be here, and God bless the children that they continue, they continue to stay well.
Thanks for always being here, Ed. Okay. Anybody else want to speak about the budget? Okay.
I do agree with Ed about the lunch. I've been bringing it up
And we've been, yes, Mylen and I have brought that up a million times, Ed, you know. We wanted to look, we've been looking outside the box and into different ways to do that. So, hopefully we get that done, at least, at the very least. Um, we are going to, in, we, next on the agenda is the introduction of the board candidates. I'm gonna put you guys off for a minute, and myself, I'm, obviously. We have the students here. We're gonna have your report first, okay? We forgot to put you on the agenda.
I know.
Uh, hello, everyone. Um, I hope you're all doing well. Uh, so, right now, we are planning the ring event jointly between the sophomore and junior class. The tentative date for that is June eleventh. It will be held outdoors for people who purchase class rings. We are currently debating whether or not to charge people who did not purchase class rings to come to the event. They would have to pay a fee. We're not sure what that looks like or even if we will charge, but that is in its planning stages. Um, the paintball night, which we hosted, was a success. Everybody seemed to enjoy it. All the seniors really liked it. Um, unfortunately, movie night has been canceled due to budgetary and spatial issues, so that will no longer be happening. That was supposed to be a joint project between the sophomore and junior class. Yes, it was going to be outside where instead of cars, we had like six-foot areas on the grass and people would come and sit. Yeah, on the field. Um, but we didn't have, it would have been too much of an investment to have it with not enough turnaround for profit. So we had to unfortunately cancel. Um, elections are starting, um, election season for student government, and the classes are going to be starting next week. So anybody who would like to run needs to get their, uh, fifty signatures. But we are also, um, offering a alternative this year for virtual students. Instead of the fifty signatures, they can get two letters of recommendation. Um, Connect Quad from the Couch, our second year of that, it was just posted on YouTube. Um, there will be a winner announced hopefully by the end of the week. I suggest everyone go watch it. Um, we will have members of the faculty vote to determine a winner. Uh, the winner will receive a gift card to a local business, um, a restaurant, and a trophy, and that trophy will be displayed in the student government window and then given to the winner.
What is the, do you have the link for that? Can you give that to, is that on our website?
Um, it was posted to the Connect Quad, um, YouTube channel, but it was also posted on Google Classroom for Students, and it was also posted on Facebook.
Okay, can you, we put that on our website as well so that everyone can go onto our website and just have access to On the Couch? What is it called?
Connect Quad From the Couch.
I like that. From the Couch.
Um, we did it last year as well. It is a virtual talent show where students could record them doing any sort of talent and submit it. We did it in lieu of our usual in-person talent show. It's sponsored by Student Government. Last year was a little bit more successful than this year, just because, you know, everyone was virtual and in quarantine. Um, so this might be the last year we're doing it. We're not sure, especially if things go back to normal, but I highly suggest everybody go watch it. Um.
Thank you.
And last thing, um, Adventureland is coming up. All grades are gonna be doing Adventureland. Um, that is happening on May twelfth. Uh, it is sixty dollars. It in, does not include transportation, but it includes tickets to the park. The park will be closed for us, and it also includes food. Um, if you would like to purchase a ticket, you have to print out a permission slip from the website and give it to the attendance office with your cash or money order in between periods, um, two and eight. And that will be going on for the next three days. If you would like to purchase a ticket, it's open to all grade levels.
How come we're not providing transportation for the, for this trip? Did we, haven't we done trips that night before?
No. Th- this is a, this is a, a, a class trip, so it, it's not, it's, we've never provided busing for that.
When the kids go away for that senior trip up, up in the mountains, don't they leave like early in the morning, come home late at night?
They, and, yes, we do provide busing for that, but we did not provide busing for Adventureland.
Why? I mean, what if he can't go now because his mother is working or, or so, like?
I think we could ask to make arrangements for something like that.
Can we find out about that? Because that's a little lemonade to some of the children.
Okay.
You know, if, if somebody doesn't have a, a transportation, they can't go.
Okay.
Yeah. Would that, would that help out if we provided transportation, if we could try to do that?
Yes, I, I mean, student government is not in charge of that. Um, this is.
No, that's us.
Yeah, through the administration. So yes, that would definitely help students because it is at night. And we do need to, in order for the park to be closed for us, have a certain amount of ticket sales, so it would definitely help.
All right, so yeah, if we could, if we could look into that, that'd be great.
Okay, great.
Thank you so much.
So for the junior class, they're having an event June seventeenth on Connect Quad property in lieu of junior cruise. Um, details are still being ironed out, and they're to be determined. That's all I really know for that event. And also, I would like to thank the Board of Ed as well as the, um, APs and especially Mr. Moran for allowing so many senior events. Um, obviously, there's restrictions placed on them and everything, but I'd just like to give a really big thank you to everybody because we're still allowed to have banquet, prom, and we're still working on a graduation. So I just really want to be, give a really big thank you to everybody for allowing us to have those events. I know last year they were taken away from the students, unfortunately, and this year I'm really grateful that we have them. Um, I have a couple of students from, actually, a bunch of students from National Honor Society, wrote Mr. Moran a couple of letters saying, thank you. I have a couple I could read if you want me to. Okay. Okay. So one says from Michael Perez, Dear Mr. Moran, going into this year was really hard. I was happy to be back in school, but I knew it wouldn't be anywhere near normal. Being that it was my senior year, having to adapt to and accept everything that was probably a little more hard on me and my classmates. But as the year went on, I saw how hard you and everyone else fought to give us everything you could. I could not be more grateful for how hard everyone pushed for things to be as normal as possible for us. Hearing that we are going back to school every day was probably some of the greatest news I've got. I've been going to school with some of my classmates since pre-K, and I'm so grateful to have the opportunity to finish up my year with them. I thank you so much for all the work our school did to get sports back and to c- continue through hard times. High school sports are for a lot of u- us, as you know. Our last experience is playing or competing. Thank you for pushing us to have a last season and for everyone to have a seas- season in general. And of course, thank you for what the school has done to give the seniors our final school events, prom, banquet, and graduation. I think I can speak for everyone when I say that I'm beyond thankful for the work everyone has put in to get these events happening as normally as possible. I don't think I can even say it enough, but thank you so much for everything you have done for us this year. There's a lot more. There's a huge stack I have. I'm not gonna read every single one.
If you could give us a copy, though, we'd love to read them.
Sure. Um, should I? Okay.
That'd be awesome.
Miss Sosa will give me a copy and then I'll, I'll present to you guys.
If we could have a copy, we could all read them or email them if that's easier, scan them. Yeah, to Jessie, and then she'll distribute it to, we'd love to read them.
Okay, no problem.
For all of them tonight.
There's a lot. Yeah, I won't read every single one, don't worry.
That, that one's fine. Thank you so much.
No problem. Okay.
All righty.
All right.
Anything else from the junior class?
No, that was really it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All righty. All right, the next is the, uh, introduction of the board candidates. You can introduce yourselves. You can briefly provide your backgrounds, such as how long you're living in the district, family, education, employment. But we are not allowed to campaign. No campaigning, no saying, vote for me, none of that. Um, the first one up, we'll, we'll do it in order of, uh, uh, yes, yeah, that's fine. So Sarah, you're up first.
Um, hi, everybody.
Hi, Sarah.
Thank you so much for having us today. Um, so my name is Sarah. A little bit about me, um, I went through Connect Quad from kindergarten and graduated in the high school, born and raised in Rockonkoma. Um, I've been working with, um, individuals experiencing homelessness for, uh, about five years, a little over five years now. Um, and I'm currently working with veterans experiencing homelessness, um, and I'm, I'm just so thankful for, for where, you know, I, I am. And, um, you know, it is, I'm very passionate about it. So, um, I'm also very thankful for, uh, Connect Quad, um, you know, and I attribute a lot of where I'm at now to the guidance that I've received from the Connect Quad schools and the faculty. Um, so as a recent graduate, um, I also feel that I do have an idea of, you know, what the struggles have been. Um, I also experienced the COVID lockdown and, and the change in this, uh, scenery as I'm a current college student, um, in Suffolk, or I graduated from Suffolk with my associate, so now in Stony Brook. And I'm looking to graduate, um, in actually a few short weeks, um, with my bachelor's in social work. I've been accepted to, um, Stony Brook's Masters, uh, in Social Work Program, the one-year accelerated program. Very excited. Um, I'm very thankful to be here, um, and to be accepted. Um, and, uh, another note that I, um, also have been a member of the National, um, um, the National Society of, with social workers, the, um, NASW chapter, the New York State. And I've been working with them, uh, scrutinizing the New York State budgets. Um, we've been working on that and submitting, um, just our changes that we've been wanting to see. So I do have, um, a little bit of budget background. Um, and, and that's a little bit about me. I do have a sister in the district. She's twelve. Um, she's taller than me, and, uh, she's also way too smart for her own good. Um, and she's my whole world. Um, so, so yeah, so that's a little bit about me. And, and again, I really appreciate the opportunity to, to speak and introduce myself.
Thank you, Sarah. Thank you. Okay. I'll go next. I'll just stand up here. My microphone's a little bit louder. Hi, I'm Eileen Panago. I'm currently the president of the Board of Ed. I've been coming to these Board of Ed meetings for about seventeen years. Uh, my experience is in accounting and budgeting. I've been go, on Board of Education committees for the budgeting. I am hard-nosed about it, as Bridget can attest. I want everything to be done legally, and I want the money to the taxpayers at the lowest that we can possibly do. I am loud and obnoxious at times, but it's only because I give, I care about the kids, and I want what's best for the kids. I will fight to the death for them. Um, whether you like me or not, your kid doesn't, your kid will always matter to me. So I hope that, uh, everybody gets out there and, and runs next year and the year after because I think it's a great thing that we have all these people. And that's it. That's who I am. Oh, wait, I'm from Rockonkoma for twenty-five years, and I still live there. Thank you. All right, now we have Marisol.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. My name is Marisol. I was born and raised in Brentwood to immigrant parents. Um, I went to Hopshire University where I got my Bachelor's of Science in Biochemistry. I am a supervisor chemistry, I'm a chemist supervisor, where I've been working for twenty-two years. My husband and I moved to Bohemia fourteen years ago. We were searching for a great school district for our kids. We have three children. I have one in each tier. I have one at Sycamore, one at OBMS, and one in the high school. I've always been very involved in my children's lives. I've been very active with the PTAs. Um, participated in lots of activities at the schools. I chaired many fundraisers. My children are actively involved in sports. I had two children just play in the varsity soccer. My middle schooler did play in the varsity soccer this season. That was a great experience for them. Um, so that's a little about me. I decided to run because of the children. Um, making sure that they and every child has the best education is very important to me. Being from immigrant parents, they always place a big emphasis on education. So that, to me, was very important to exude on my children and all children. Um, I have a lot of respect for the students, the administrators, teachers, our clerical, bus driver, custodial staff. I want to thank all of them for all the hard work that they've done to make the district run during the pandemic. It must have been hard, and your work is very grateful. So I applaud all of you for all your efforts to make our children your priority, and that's a little about me.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Good luck.
Thank you.
Brian Murphy?
Good evening. Thanks for having me. Um, a little bit about me. My name is Brian Murphy. I grew up in Rockonkoma along with my three sisters. We're all graduates of Connect Quad High School. I lived in the district my entire life, uh, except for a few years when I went out to Arizona State. I received a degree in business management. I have more than twenty years of professional sales experience in medical and technology sales. I reside in Bohemia with my three children who are currently in the Connect Quad schools. I have a son who's a sophomore at the high school and twin daughters that are at OBMS in eighth grade. Um, I've coached Connect Quad youth soccer and lacrosse for over seven years, and I've been heavily involved in my children's education, having attended almost all of their in-class parent programs, field trips, concerts, and school-related activities. This is where I realized what an amazing community of students, teachers, administrators, parents, and all the countless groups that go into making this district something to be proud of. My children and I have had nothing but positive experiences in our education here at Connect Quad. I hope to contribute as part of a collaborative team to have thoughtful conversations with objectivity, mutual respect, and kindness. I'm running for the Board of Education for all the children, for those that are just starting their T-Bird journey, like my niece and nephew at Bostie, and for all the other amazing families I've met along my journey here in the district. It's about the kids, and I hope to make Connect Quad thrive and become a better district for years to come. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good luck. Mark Washaw.
Hello, everybody. Um, my name is Mark Washaw. I've been a resident of Connect Quad for past over twenty-five years. I'm basically, um, self-employed for about thirty years. I have a wife at home that I adore. I have two children. My first child, uh, is graduating Hopshire University this semester. He's also been on the dean's list for every semester, which I'm extremely proud of. My other son is an army man for four years and also working at the Smithtown School District as maintenance for ten years. And now is back in school at St. Joseph's College and going for his four-year degrees, on his third. And he's actually been on the dean's list, too. So I'm extremely proud of them. I basically believe in full transparency, doing what's right for the community, even when it's sometimes the things that, not to go along with everybody. Sometimes you're, this, this job up here is not a job that's very, um, popular by no means. But I, what goes on behind the scenes also is we fight a lot, and we basically fight to save every single do- dollar, what Ed said tonight when he spoke about the little things add up. As the rest of the board could probably tell you, I'm one of those guys that fight for every little thing. Everything makes a difference in this district, and we need to do that. I'm an advocate for all the children. I love children. Um, I basically care about all the people in, in the com- community, and I will be an advocate and always, if you have a problem, you can call me. I'll be the first one there, and I will stick up for you if, if, if I look into it and what you need to have done. And that's the problem I sometimes have is I get involved when I shouldn't. But it's just who I am and what I'm gonna do. I just thank everybody for the opportunity to introduce myself again. I urge everybody to get out there and vote, and I will try to save as much money as I can for the district and do whatever I can for the children. They do come first. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Thank you all for coming tonight. Good luck to everyone. Um, okay, I need to adjourn the public hearing. I need to call for a motion and a second to adjourn the public hearing and resume the business meeting. I need a motion?
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, uh, recommended actions, personnel matters. Schedule one, resignations, terminations, leaves of absence. I need a motion and a second to approve the personnel matters from schedule one. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I need a motion and a second to approve the personnel matters for schedule two, appointments, tenure, salary changers. Second, all in favor? Aye. Okay, the consent agenda. Um, I need, where's my little thingy here? There is some changes to that. We are tabling item number eight. So I need a motion and a second, um, to, to approve items two through, and there's an addition, oh, wait, sorry, there's an add, um, consent agenda, item number twelve with an amendment to, you know, as amended. That was the, uh, contract we talked about. It has an amended thing on there. The work agreement. Okay, so we're adding that on as we amend to that. So I need a motion and a second to, um, discuss items and approve items two through twelve minus item eight. First, we can have some, I need a motion and a second, then we can have a discussion. All second. Any discussion? I actually did have something I had to bring up, right? Where's my sheet? Did anybody else have anything on there? First of all, I think that piano thing is awesome. And I thought that that was a great donation. Um, the transportation is what I wanted to bring up for them. Uh, I think that was it. I think I just wanted to bring up that transportation.
Lucy Puglin, there's a, um, memorial scholarship for her.
Okay, yes.
Um, just a, I, I can't say enough about her. She was a wonderful, calm.
Yeah, that's all I had.
Sweet woman with the children. They loved her. My children loved her. So.
Yeah.
So to see her name as memorial, it just chokes me up because, uh, she, she did a lot for our district and, uh, it was beautiful what she had done for the kids.
That's nice, Mylin. Thank you. All right, so, um, I need an all in favor then for those items two through twelve minus eight.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Okay, where's my sheet now? Oh, that's it.
We're done.
Eileen, I wanted to do some, no, but discussion.
Oh, well, we don't have that on this agenda because it's the public hearing meeting, but, um, we do have some time if you'd like to bring something up. Sure, I'm gonna just step out for one moment because I have.
Stay for one because I want you to add to it about freshman awareness.
Okay, hurry up, though.
All right, here we go.
Go to the ladies' room.
Okay, first I want to say thank you so, so much to so many different people. In the last two weeks, I got to go to a bunch of different things. Um, first, for freshman awareness, thank you, Ms. Goodwin. Thank you, Mrs. Seff. Uh, thank you, Ms. Seff, for getting us on. We had some technical problems.
Yeah, I had some technical difficulties.
And Mylin, but, uh, we all got to go on and got to see what was going on and let them tell about this.
I didn't get on. Jackie, I never got on.
I got on.
I got on and I got to hear the bedtime story, and I got, I, I really got all choked up even listening to it. I had to shut my camera off because it was, it was beautiful. You girls. because it was, it was beautiful. You girls did an amazing job. To all the staff that was involved, all the teachers, all the staff that helped out. I absolutely love freshman awareness and I hope next year it's back in person and I hope that I get an invite because
Although, I don't know if I want to sleep on those air mattresses again, but
I'll tell you what. I'll do the all-nighter. I'll do the all-nighter. I'm good.
We did, Mylin, how many times have we done it? It, it's a great thing and I really do enjoy hanging out with the kids. So, for me, the bed back the next day was kind of worth it.
I know that you two are both, Mylin and, and, um, Eileen, I know you two are the biggest
I love that. I mean, everything that they do, we stay for those kids is amazing.
It was awesome. And I have to say, um, thank you so much to Mrs. Sepp and Ms. Goodwin again for also making, they had all the kids thank me for being on there. So thank you to all the children too for being so sweet, kind to me and, and accepting and allowing me to come into your freshman awareness and joining in. It was actually very nice and really it was wonderful, wonderful, wonderful. The next thing was the Cherokee Wellness Day. Thank you, Linda, for, for allowing me to go there and thank you to Mrs. Leahy for inviting me. Um, both of the social workers at Cherokee are top-notch. They did an amazing, amazing job bringing, um, focusing on the children's mental health while making it fun. It was incredible. To say that now I want my own little, uh, they have like little pets on the desk for the children. And, and it actually teaches the young kids about responsibility and empathy and I absolutely wanted to take all their little pets home with me, the little pandas, the little koalas. It was beautiful. And, and I just wanted people to know.
Jackie, didn't you do the meditation room too?
Yeah, let me tell you something. I did the yoga. I watched Mrs. Leahy do yoga and I watched her play kickball with the fourth and fifth graders. Way to go. It was awesome.
I just want to give a shout out to Duffield too because I've been to theirs. So if you had a shout out to Cherokee, I want to give a shout out to Duffy because their meditation room is just as good.
Well, I gotta tell you, I'm hoping and I, Dean, this is coming your way, Dean. I'm hoping that all of the schools are gonna be, if they haven't, they might have done it, are gonna do a wellness day because it was incredible. PPS did a great job, the social workers, the teachers, the aides. What I saw out there was incredible. Security was out there watching the kids. It was incredible. The custodians for helping clean up. I mean, really, it was incredible. My, really one of my favorite things. I loved Wellness Day. And even next year, I want to be invited to all the Wellness Days. I think I needed it. It was nice and calming. It was awesome, awesome. Uh, moving on, I got to attend something very special, so I'd like to thank Dr. Adams. And I'd like to, to thank Mr. Pete Mallore because they, Mallore, because he, they actually were able to bring me with them to a special gymnastics meet. The Long Island Championship. All girls, congratulations to the girls of Kenequa. They won the championship. Um, then we had five, five of Kenequa's girls made the, the Long Island team for the Suffolk County. It was just, they were amazing. All of the girls from all over, they did an amazing job. Incredible, really. They, they deserve a round of applause and I hope to have them here. Eileen, this is what I was saying, May twenty-fifth, I would like to have a meeting and I would like to have the kids. I'd like to bring the kids in, so I think we're gonna make a special meeting on May twenty-fifth. Um, it'll be right after the vote, but we can have the Long Island Championship girls here for, for gymnastics. I would like to recognize them.
That'd be awesome.
Um, I would also like to say that I went to volleyball games with Linda and I had a great time. And even though we didn't come in first, we came in second. And that is unbelievable and incredible. What athletes we have here at Kenequa. I mean, honestly, you girls did an incredible job. Watching you guys play was amazing. So again, great job to them too. And I think, let me see if that might be the last thing. Let me see. Oh, wait, one thing going to Dean. Dean, are we, I just want to make sure that with all of these, not gonna go over the dates and stuff, but all of these moving up ceremonies that we're doing. We're making sure that the graduations don't conflict with the other ones, especially elementary. Because some kids get bused from other schools to let's say Cherokee or Sycamore. I don't want to see that parents can't be at their kids moving ups. You know, if you have children that are moving up at two different schools, which could possibly potentially happen if you have twins or something like that.
Yes, that all, that was taken into consideration when the dates were selected by the elementary schools.
Um, okay. I have two things, um, really fast. First of all, you, um, updated the opt-out numbers and with the virtual students. Right, and those are gonna go up on the website? The other thing that I had, and, uh, Mylin, I believe has the same question about the Regents. Um, I've got a lot of questions in. If a child, uh, fails the Regents, are they still pass, uh, passing the class? Are they still getting Regents diploma? Um, we need to make that a little bit more clear because I don't, I, you know, I don't think the parents understand how New York State did all that, because some of them, you have to take, some of them you don't. Yeah, so can you address that really quick before we adjourn?
So actually, I'd like to actually put that in writing, I think, all, to, out to the parents, so.
So, so there have been numerous correspondence out regarding the Regents and, uh, some of the, uh, you know, changes that have come up due to the exemptions, um, so, you know.
Well, New York State is not very clear, so if we could just make it clearer, it'd be a lot easier.
We could definitely reset.
I mean, parents have a lot of questions about, about them. I got several emails about that, so that'd be great. What was that? I can't, put your microphone on my.
They, they want to know because the Regents is
Okay, so you have to go, yeah, if you could do a brief thing now and then send it out in writing, that'd be great.
So this year, the, the New York State is offering an exemption for students taking the Regents. Uh, in order to qualify for an exemption, the student must be passing the course. If the student passes the course, they will get an E on their transcript. Um, if the student decides to sit for the Regents, uh, we elected and the board approved, uh, do no harm. So that, uh, it will only be included in the student's grade if this, if it benefits the student. Um, if the student does sit for the Regents exam, it will be recorded in their permanent record, but not on their transcript. Permanent record is E-school. That's our student management system. If a parent or student wants it to be reflected on their transcript, um, there's a process that we all set up, um, you know, during the summer that they can request it to be put on the transcript. Um, other than that, that's, that's pretty it. We, we are also offering the credit recovery, uh, with, um, that also went out to parents. Um, so we're excited about those opportunities and help our, our seniors.
Is any child that, that wants to reach out, you know, if they're having any difficulties and you can't get in touch with someone, which is usually not likely. I mean, if you email one of our staff, they usually get right back to you, but if, if you didn't get the answer that you wanted, you can always call one of us board members. We'll always try to help out because we love the kids. I need a motion and a second.
Wait, wait, wait. So one question.
One more?
Yeah, that's quick. So Dean, do you, you may or may not know this answer. Do you see a lot of the opt-out on the Regents exams?
So I, I don't have that specific data tonight, but I will share it with the board. We, we did, you know, ask parents to submit whether they were sitting or not sitting for the
That was today, right?
Or, uh, in order to
That due date was today or yesterday? The due date for the submitting for that. I know Mr. Sidman sent out an email that they had, um,
Yeah, that, that was for credit recovery.
Oh, okay, okay, that was different.
Oh, I'm sorry. You're gonna kill me. One last question because this is another
See, you lie to me all the time, Mylin.
Uh, Linda, so right now with the graduation, if parents are gonna come to attend these graduations, let's address the high school for just for a second. So are we still having to test, provide vaccination? Is, is, what are we, where are we at with that now?
So we have not received any update since the last board meeting, uh, that any of the regulations would be changed. So at this point, in order to go above the two-hundred-person limit for an outdoor event, everyone at the event would either need to be, provide a, a PCR test that within seventy-two hours of the start of the event. Um, a, a rapid test within six hours of the start of the event. Proof that within the last ninety days, they had recovered from COVID or proof that they were two weeks past their immunization series. So we did put out a survey to the parents because at this point, we're trying to figure out if there's capacity for us to even be able to clear approximately thirteen-hundred people to be on the fields, um, if, if we even only asked for, or only permitted two, um, two attendees for each one of our graduates. It would be about thirteen-hundred people that we would have to clear.
Linda, wasn't, isn't that restriction, um, gonna be lifted on May thirty-first? Didn't I just hear that on the news? May nineteenth is
So we, we, we've heard the same rumors that you have, but we have nothing in writing from the Department of Health yet.
I see.
But at this point, we did put out a survey to all the, uh, Kenequa High School parents and guardians. I did email the community of the senior parents and guardians with the, the responses. We did have three-hundred-and-eighty individual surveys out of four-hundred-and-forty-six members of the senior class. Question number one, would, would you allow your senior document their COVID-nineteen status in order for your senior to be part of the ceremony? And only six percent of our, uh, parents said no, they would not.
Linda, I do have a question with that too. Um, there, I did get the same thing, but I also got some questions from parents who are virtual and whose child may or may not feel comfortable going, even if the restrictions are lifted. And again, you know, I believe in parental choice, so that students that are virtual right now, if they don't want to attend the ceremony, can we still recognize them in some way? Like maybe announce their names or put them on a Zoom screen or something at the graduation? I mean, just because they choose to be virtual or are comfortable with going, doesn't mean that we should forget about them, right?
We, we actually were talking about potentially flashing pictures. We definitely will read their
Or zoom them in somehow, yeah.
It would be live stream, something.
Yeah, I want to include them as well. Like every student should be included.
I agree.
No, you're done. Oh, okay.
Okay, so, um,
Sorry.
So that was eighty, that was, uh, ninety, ninety-four percent of our parents who were part of this survey said that they would allow their child to be documented. That would basically mean that the twenty-one parents who said no, those parents, those children could not come to the ceremony. Of the twenty, of the remaining folks who did say yes, that they would allow their senior to either provide the documentation or be tested, we asked if you would provide attendee documentation and ninety-five percent of the, um, parents who responded said that they would, parents and guardians, would provide documentation. At this point, the way the regulation stands, the five percent who said they would not provide attendee documentation would not be allowed at the ceremony. So we're hoping that, um, the, the restrictions do get a little bit less strict. But right now, this is what we still have to go through and think about. And so we will be meeting to see if we even have the capacity to check to make sure every person who is on the field has provided us with that information. So we will be coming back within the next couple of weeks with some suggestions and recommendations.
Okay, one other question, which I know I brought up to you and I said to you that I wanted to bring up was, um, for the children that are playing sports, whether it's our kids that are our sports kids or whether it is people who have field use permits or lease permits. Um, there were some questions about the, the mask wearing changing, the restrictions. Unfortunately, after, I wanted Linda to read about what, what actually it is, so people know that technically we all need to still wear the mask at least on Kenequa property.
So right now, I know that the CDC has put out some changing guidelines as to fully immunize folks wearing masks. But we are not governed by the CDC in New York State. We are governed by the New York State Department of Health. And until the New York State Department of Health updates their interim guidance for sports and recreation, we still need to follow their guidance, which is also in our policies right now for field uses. So it's still only two attendees or two spectators for each athlete. You must be masked and you should be, you can be together with the folks from your family, but you should be six foot apart from everybody else. That's, that's the, the guidance from the New York State Department of Health. It's as of March twenty-fifth. It's updated. Um, we expect guidance to change within the next few days, but the truth is we won't know who's, who's immunized and who is not, so it's, we may have to ask the board to continue to do the mask policy. That way they don't have to provide, um, that information that they've been immunized. But at this moment, we don't follow the CDC guidelines. We are, we have, the local control is the New York State Department of Health and then that also needs to be adopted by the Suffolk County Department of Health, which is our real local control for, um, the health and safety of, of Suffolk County. So that guidance has not changed.
Thank you. I know a few people were asking and they wanted to know and I, I just didn't want them to get in trouble or God forbid lose field use permits because they can be pulled.
Yes.
Okay, at this time, I need a motion and a second to adjourn the Board of Education meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Have a good night, everybody.
Good night. Thanks for coming down.